Sorry. So because of the roll call, we're going to have Chrissy call the roll. Ms. Custer's not here yet. I know she's on her way. And Ms. Grimm is not going to be in tonight, but we have three members on Zoom and everybody else here.
Well, identified the people on Zoom, so we have it in.
And identified on Zoom are going to be Joe Vecchio, Jay Strunk, and Bill Parker.
We have Paul Leach.
I'm present.
Ashley Custer.
If you can hear me.
Slavic.
Ashley's not here yet.
Right. And Charles Snapper.
He's here.
I'm here.
Here.
Okay, Chrissy, and when Ashley joins us, just note the time.
I will.
And I also have to announce there was an executive session held on December 28th to discuss personnel that we're going to bring now. All right, so you have to do yours first, Dr. Finerty.
Mr. President, I would like to request a motion to approve an amended agenda. And I'd like to make a little explanation before I ask for that motion. Earlier today, we received updated guidance from Montgomery County Office of Public Health. And having a scheduled board meeting this evening and not another scheduled board meeting for two weeks to come, knowing that our board very much likes to have discussions such as this in front of a public forum, I communicated with the board that I would like to put forth a new agenda, which is required by the Sunshine Act. So it does require the board to vote on the new agenda. So I'm asking for a motion and a second to approve the new agenda.
So it's clear.
Make a motion, is it Joe Vecchio?
When we have public comment, you will be more than, we'll be more than happy to have you comment on the new item. So I don't want anybody to think this is their chance to speak on that. You're going to get an opportunity to speak on what the board's going to act on. This is simply the formality and the process, as Dr. Finerty indicated. Under the revised Sunshine law, we have to revise the agenda. That's the simple procedural thing we're doing right now.
I second Joe's motion.
I have a first and a second. Does anybody have any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Is anybody, any opposed? Motion carries, we'll have the new business item. Now, real quick, for the public, because I want everybody, because obviously there is three different items on this particular agenda, and I want to make sure everybody has full time to do their speaking on the different items, because you didn't have them ahead of time. So we're going to have regular public comment on agenda items, because the stuff that you were going to do the agenda on, right? Now, originally, health and safety was not part of it, right? I am going to open up a special public comment strictly for the health and safety part, all right? So the health and safety people, I have you three here, and if anybody else, after you listen to the new business item, you're going to have a total separate public comment just for that. So I'm going to keep you guys just to that, so everybody has plenty of time to discuss what they want to hear, plus they hear about the new items, so they're not sitting there saying, hey, I have to talk now, because I don't, and I didn't even have a chance to hear what it's about, all right? So for now, we're going to do the public comment on the agenda items that are not part of the health part. Is there anybody that wants to do any public comment not about the health? We are going to get to you guys. You guys have your own separate one. Anybody on video? All right, so then we're going to move on to the next item.
Item, item four, student representative report.
Good evening, everyone. In December, we held our first Falcon Feedback Friday at the high school. For those who don't know what that is, it is when two students from each grade are picked and they come down in a group to meet with the principals, as Matt and I ask them four questions. These questions are: What does Potts Grove do great? What can Potts Grove improve on? What can you dream Potts Grove could become? And what will you do to make Potts Grove a better place? One of the biggest takeaways from this meeting was the accessibility of feminine products in the women's bathroom, and how we can make it easier to obtain whether the school stocks, the bathroom, or out in the cabinets in the hallway.
Throughout the month of January, Lily and I are set to travel to all the other schools in the district to conduct Falcon Feedback sessions with the younger generation so that their voice is heard. Finally, in December, Mr. Anshbach took me and a group of other student athletes to West Patch Grove Elementary to talk about how we use the Falcon floor while being a student athlete, and to have recess with the kids. It was a very fun experience seeing the elementary school kids so engaged in what we were saying, and then them just being so excited to hang out with us and wonder what high school's all like. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody in the board have any questions? Well, thank you very much. Next item.
Item five, approval of minutes. Item 5.1, approval of the 12 to 21 reorganization board minutes.
Make a motion, we approve the minutes from the reorganization.
Second.
Joe Vecchio.
It's Joe.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. First one, you guys, did anybody say for both or for just one? Just one?
I did not hear a motion to combine.
All right, so we're going to do the one then. Does anybody have any questions? Hearing nothing, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Item 5.2, approval of the monthly board action minutes from 12 to 2021.
Make a motion, we accept and approve the monthly board action minutes from 12 to.
Second.
Joe Vecchio.
I hear a motion and a second to approve the minutes from 12 to. Does anybody have any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next item.
Next item are our financial items. Ms. Grimm unfortunately couldn't be here this evening. So I'll walk that, walk us through those individually, or Mr. Linky? Fantastic.
Need a motion to accept the high school, middle school, and cafeteria counts as presented.
Make a motion, we accept.
You're good, Joe. We got it.
The accounts for audit.
I need a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the recounting of the audit. Do I have any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes for the audit.
Need a motion to ratify the payment of invoices in the amount of $3,701,382.54 for November 2021 as presented.
I have a motion and a second to approve paying November's bills. Does anybody have any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
7.2, need a motion to approve the payment of invoices in the amount of $6,888,756.56 for December 2021 as presented.
I have a motion and a second to approve paying the bills for December. Does anybody have any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Treasurers report.
8.1, need a motion to approve the Treasurers' report for November 2021 and December 2021 as presented and file it for audit.
Hear a motion and a second to approve the November, December, and present for audit. Does anybody have any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Move the superintendent report.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Ramidge, would you be so kind to pull up the draft of the 2023, 20, 2022, 2023 student calendar from Board Docs? This evening, I'd like to share our draft of the 2022, 2023. That is not the calendar that you have picked up. That happens, that's a different item that we'll talk about later. The, this, this draft is the product of conversations with some staff members, administrators, and some parent, a parent group that gave me some feedback. And what, what's being projected here at some point? Ms. Prior, can you? Could you project the 2022, 2023 calendar? It's actually item, it's right in my superintendent's report. It's all right. So, the, I thought it was important to, and I published this in the, the public side of our Board Docs, to explain the why behind the calendar. A big part of it is makeup days. We believe that makeup days are best in person. And that if we have to pivot to virtual days, the last thing in the world we want to try to do is to pivot to virtual days in an emergency, and ask teachers to, and students and families to flip the switch to a virtual day without a lot of notice. So that was one governing kind of thought. Now, talking about in-person makeup days, we believe they should be built into the calendar, not added on. All stakeholders should expect that a school year is going to end on a given date, and unless situations beyond anyone's control comes, that date should be honored, and we should start the, the, our summer on that date. That helps the district with planning, extended school year, summer programming, all the things that we want to do to kind of offer to our community. The other, other piece that we, we believe, we want to end the, end the school year as close to Memorial Day as possible. When kids get far into June, they are less focused on the educational process. And I think you could ask any teacher, whether our teachers or any other teacher, a day in August is worth, worth two or three in June. There's just more focus, the kids are more, the whole organization is better focused. And then the, the last kind of piece of why is, well, let's make the calendar easy to read. Our current calendar structure has a lot of different colors. It has staff information and, and student and parent information. Additionally, we have, under our current structure, we have two different early dismissals. There's no reason that we need that. So we're looking to make this more easier to read and, and more family-friendly as well. So that's, that's kind of the why behind it. The details of it are, the first day for staff would be August 22nd, and that is one day earlier than they would otherwise have reported. The first day for students in this calendar would be Wednesday, August 23rd. That would be three days earlier. This would give students, and this is kind of another benefit, this would give students and families a soft entry to the year. The first week would just be three days. The next week would be four days. The, the next week would be four days, and then four and a half days. They're in their fifth, fifth week before they actually get a full five days. So it's kind of a soft entry into the school year, which we look at as a positive. The fixed end date would be June 2nd, which is the first Friday after Memorial Day. So the traditional start of summer, so we're, we're, we feel we're very close to that. We would have four snow makeup days built in. They would be identified, which ones we would use. They're built in around the Easter holiday as a spring break. And if we get no snow days, great, we'll use that as a nice long break. If we need them, they will flex into school days and we'll get out on June 2nd. And then we'll, we will standardize early dismissal. There will be one early dismissal, and we don't have that plan fully developed yet. But with, as a district with, with fairly high economic disadvantage, it is, we are, the schedule that we're working towards is a schedule that feeds our students before we dismiss them, okay? So that is the calendar. The calendar that we're talking about is just for students. This is a contract negotiation year with our association, our teachers. So we would publish a teacher calendar that would look similar to this internally, but that, that's going to depend on, on some of the language of the contracts. So that's, that's what we're thinking. This is an informational item now, and then this would be something that we'd put on the agenda for, for our next meeting in January. You know what? I don't want to shortchange anyone. The other thing that's in here right now is, in the current, this, this schedule, there's not a spring conference date. So that's something that, in, with feedback with the groups that I've talked to, that was less valuable, that the fall conferences were much more valuable, especially at the elementary level, where every, every parent had a scheduled conference. So any questions on that?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Can you hear me okay? Can you hear me?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay, so, do I understand correctly that, I think you said that the teachers start one day and the students start the very next day? Typically, there's been meetings and trainings, and, you know, that staff have had to attend, you know, getting ready for the new school year, preparing the classrooms. I, I have a hard time understanding how one day will be enough for all that.
Excellent question. So I was, perhaps not as clear as I, as I intended to be. The staff would start on Monday with a half day, just like we normally do. A half day opening ceremony, and then the, the half, the rest of that day would be theirs. Then we would have a full day of PD on Tuesday with teach, with students starting on Wednesday.
Oh, Wednesday, okay, I thought you said Tuesday.
Yeah, so historically, we've had two and a half days with teachers prior to having students in. We would shrink that to one and a half using this schedule.
Okay, my other question is, with doing away with spring conferences, I get concerned when we lessen the, the, the time for parents and teachers to sit together, but I'm trusting that parents will still, teachers will reach out to parents when there's concerns, and parents will still be able to meet with teachers at any point in the school year, correct? To, you know, deal with concerns with their students.
Of course. Parents can reach out to teachers, and teachers are, work with parents every day. With regards to how that conversation could go, again, we haven't specifically worked out what it would look like because of the, the, the contract negotiations that are ongoing. But there, there's a lot of different avenues that we can go, and, and I feel confident that we could build a calendar around this structure that's going to appeal to all stakeholders.
Thank you.
And to be clear, I'm going to present the student calendar for next, at next meeting, and we're going to have to work with the staff calendar as the contract negotiations kind of work through. Does that make sense? Okay.
Any other questions? All right, let's move on to personnel.
Item 10, personnel.
Motion to combine items 10.1 through 10.9.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve 10.1 through 10.9. Do I have any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, we're at 10.10.
10.10. It is a bittersweet moment that we approach item 10.10, which is a resignation of Mr. Jeff Cardwell, who is our Director of Facilities. I believe Mr. Cardwell is still here. Hello, sir? So we need, we need a motion and a second. So the question was, from the floor, was what if we don't?
With great reluctance, I'll make this motion.
Ego reluctance, second, yeah.
I have a, I have a. Can you hear me? Someone on? All right, we're going back to this one. I have, I need to. I have a motion and a second to approve, unfortunately, Jeff's resignation. Do I have any questions or comments?
Yes, I would like to comment. I haven't known Jeff long, but I, I want to, I did send an email to staff. It, it's a bittersweet moment when, when someone moves on. We are sorry for their departure, and I, I'm looking through, Gus, I'm looking through you right at Jeff, right? It's a bittersweet moment. You are a valued colleague, and we are going to miss you. And on the other hand, we are happy that you have found an opportunity that appeals to you, and you feel is good for you. So congratulations, and thank you. Turkey for the district office party?
I also have a comment. I have worked with Jeff for my entire time with me and the board, and more importantly, when I was on the Booster Club. And I mentioned to my wife that Jeff was resigning, she was like, F no. You know, call him up and tell him whatever you got to do. And I, I have to say, it is definitely going to be a loss to us, but congratulations on the new position.
I'd like to chime in too. You know, if you ever sit down and talk to Jeff, he has some of the most amazing stories from his time in Philadelphia and his high school that I didn't even know existed, some kind of farm high school in Philadelphia. I mean, just amazing. You're, you're leaving very large shoes to fill, and we're definitely sorry to see you go, and it's definitely the MCIU's gain and our loss, but best of luck.
I'm just going to say, Jeff, thank you for your seven years. You have truly, you know, like, anyone's goal is always to leave a person or a, or a workplace better than you found it, and you have done that. Thank you for that. It's been such a privilege to work alongside you, just in this small role of service. I have appreciated you tremendously.
Jeff, I've known you for as long as I've been on the board, four years, and one of the things that I've been impressed by is your, your unfailing ability to handle. the things that I've been impressed by is your unfailing ability to handle even surprising and unpleasant situations. A lot of us in engineering have a list of people, and it sounds like something that might not be honored. You keep a list of people you'd like to get stuck with on a rocky startup, and I use rocky deliberately because the first thing we worked on together was the middle school roof. But anyway, and that's a bad pun, most of you won't catch it, there were rocks that held the membrane in place. But anyhow, we'd like to keep a list of people you'd like to work on these really tough projects. And that doesn't sound like a complimentary thing, but it really is, because to get on that list, you have to be steady, you have to not panic, you have to be able to handle tough situations and handle them on the fly. And you're a prime example of what it takes to do that kind of engineering, and you've done it for us, and it's just been a masterclass on how project engineering should be done. So good luck in the future, and just for me, as speaking for myself, you'll always have a friend here at Pots Grove. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Congratulations, Jeff. It's been very enjoyable for the years. I've met you, worked with you, and conversations here, as well as at soccer matches we've met up, so good luck with your journey, enjoy yourself.
All right, we're going to move on to 10.11.
Oh, we do need a vote.
Oh, we got to vote, okay. We need to vote. All those in favor of I, all those in favor of accepting your resignation?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes, 10.11. Now, real quick, 10.11, this is where I'm going to open up things after we give what's going on with the new health and safety plan in this part. I'm going to open up the public comment to discuss this particular item and the three individuals that want to speak about your health and safety issues. So this is where everybody's going to get plenty of time. I want to go through what we're planning on doing, and then everybody gets an opportunity to discuss. I know it has to go to, we have to prove.
Yeah, this is the, this is separate.
Separate, I know. I know, but I'm giving them.
All right, okay. Sure. Item 10.11. It is a motion to rescind the resolution of assurance testing of unvaccinated staff. I need a motion and a second, and then we can discuss it.
I have a motion and a second, so we can open up the discussion. Go ahead, Dr. Finer.
So based on the guidance that we received today from Montgomery County Office of Public Health, one piece of that guidance was to allocate tests, rapid antigen tests, to high-value testing situations, such as mask-to-stay, test-to-stay, and point-of-contact testing, testing of symptomatic individuals. They specifically addressed testing of unvaccinated staff as something, assurance testing of unvaccinated staff as something that they recommend we do not move forward with, and I do want to recall for the board that we operate under their licensure. So technically, if they say that we can't do this, and we do have to resubmit a testing application, we can't put this on there.
All right. First, I'm going to open it up to public comment, because this is a new item. Do we have anybody online first that wants to talk about anything with the health and safety plan and this new idea of not testing unvaccinated, as Montgomery County Health Department is requesting us to do? All right, so I'm going to open up the hearing. Does anybody want to talk to about the unvaccinated testing part? And then I'm going to go to you guys right here. Anybody first? I'm giving everybody an opportunity to discuss, because this was a new business item, so I want anybody to have an opportunity to discuss what we're going to vote on. All right, I got nobody. So we're going to go. Dustin, come on up. Obviously, state your name, township, and you have two minutes.
Dustin D'Atillo, Lower Pots Grove Township. Good to see everybody again. Happy New Year. New Year, lot of the same old thinking. You know, I will comment on it real quick. I'm glad you guys are talking about rescinding this. This is stuff, though, people like me and Andy Corman, we're talking about months ago, was pointless. You guys keep relying on this Montgomery County Office of Public Health. We didn't get to touch much on the Supreme Court ruling for PA, who ruled against Allison Beam. You guys are aware of that, right? They ruled against Allison Beam, the Health Secretary of Masking Law. Okay, she resigned. She resigned because of her illegal mandates. Now, she's up here with power. You guys, along with Montgomery County Department of Health and the public health of health, is all below her. I don't see why you guys think you have the power, but she didn't, and she was well above you guys. But here you guys are, continuing her little power trip. Yeah, you're testing people with no symptoms. You guys helped create that panic. You guys did. You, Washington, all the leaders, Wolf, all of them, you guys helped create that panic. So you guys give yourself a round of applause. You know, you guys are supposed to be higher educators. You guys cannot accept new facts that come at you. Lena Wen, medical analyst, CNN, states cloth masks, like a lot of you guys are wearing, are little more than facial decorations. But here you guys are, wearing masks. It's disappointing that I send my kids here, and I'm hoping they're grabbing education, but you guys can't seem to educate yourselves. It's just sad. I mean, no matter what you do, how many masks you wear, how many jabs you get, you're gonna catch a respiratory virus. This is frustrating, man. I go to the COVID data hub in Montgomery County, PA. When's the last time anybody's died in Montgomery County of COVID? You guys can yell it out if anybody knows. It's been quite a while. Nobody in Montgomery County under 25 has died of COVID. But here you guys are, still requiring my child, my children, several of them, to wear masks. You guys don't talk about natural immunity. That's another thing you guys can't seem to grasp and educate yourselves on. You guys have mass formation psychosis. All of you do. And Joe Vecchio, Ms. McIntyre, I know you guys are with me on this, but you guys need to educate these people, really.
Thank you. Mr. Corman, come on up. Obviously, state your name.
Andrew Corman, Upper Pots Grove Township. Please take one of these graphs. This is data from the Bucks County ARC GIS dashboard for approximately the past eight weeks, maybe 12 weeks, and you will see that on this dashboard, science wins.
Mr. Corman, put your mask up, please.
Mr. Leach, I just did.
Thank you.
Mask-required districts are at a much higher rate than mask-optional districts. Please take one of these bar graphs and pass it around. As school board members and as a superintendent, I would certainly hope that you've all read the Pots Grove School District Policy Manual in Section 800, under the term Child Abuse. It states by definition, which has not been changed since 2018, that child abuse, line item eight, is engaging in any of the following acts. Section E from line item eight, interfering with the breathing of a child. That being said, you all are aware that the Pennsylvania Supreme Court, which Dustin just mentioned, ruled six to nothing to uphold the state, they ruled that the mask mandate is unlawful. School boards who continue to require universal masking of healthy students are committing medical battery. Under Act 14 of 1949 Public School Code, this is cause for removal because of neglect of duty and the mask mandates.
Thank you.
Jeanette Clifton, Lower Pots Grove. Okay. I feel like I've said this a gazillion times, through last year when we were all virtual, through all of this year, and it still is falling on deaf ears, and it's very frustrating for me. If you actually do the research, like I said, it's very frustrating. I just wanted to say that this whole mask mandate thing should be optional. Freedom, remember what that is? Because it feels like my freedom ended when your fear began. That's how it feels. And if you do look on the CDC website and actually do the numbers, yeah, there's been more deaths, but it's been skewed because, oh, somebody had, like, the elderly, they're the ones that are the most vulnerable, okay? Not the children. They have better immune systems. I just feel like I'm talking to a brick wall, and it's just nerve-wracking. I wish I had better time to do a whole lovely little speech, but I didn't have time to. I wanted to say, I guess you guys like being in fear, living in fear constantly. You have to wear your mask, pull your mask up. When does this ever help anything? It's just a fear tactic. Fear is the mind killer.
Time is up.
Thank you. Before I go on to the board, does anybody else, online or here, have any comment? And then I'm going to go to the board. All right. Anybody on the board have any questions in regards to this particular new item?
Well, I don't think I have a que, I don't know if I have a question, I have a comment. I'm rather concerned that we're going to have unvaccinated staff working with our youth, with our students, and not having any type of assurance testing. Are there any other options? Mr. Davis, perhaps, I can ask you, in requiring testing? I know we were doing the testing ourselves. What about staff getting their own testing if they choose not to be vaccinated?
As Dr. Finer indicated, it's not an easy answer. The difficulty is that we, unlike a whole plethora, if you will, or the majority of counties in Pennsylvania, we have a health department. And if you read their enabling legislation, as Dr. Finer indicated, they do have the, seemingly the right and the authority to dictate this in the county. So to answer your question, Bill, at the moment, I don't have another solution. Certainly, we'll take a look at it and give you another opinion, but at this point, unfortunately, I think we're pretty much bound to follow the county and their authority.
Any other comments?
Can I ask a clarifying question? The county, because I've, since day one, I've been in support of following the medical professionals, and for our case, that being CDC and the Department of Health, for our county. But it seems to me this isn't a, quote, "medical decision" that they're making. I understand the decision. I'm guessing it's out of concern for, you know, not having enough tests, and I get that. But just a clarifying question. They're asking us not to do our own testing with their tests, correct? That's not saying that we, they're not telling us not to require staff to do assurance testing on their own, for example, are they?
If I understand your question correctly, it goes to their CLIA, which is the licensure that we use to do the tests in school. So we currently get tests through CHOP under the CLIA of Montgomery County Office of Public Health, and if it's their decision that assurance testing is no longer, assurance testing of asymptomatic people is not in their testing guidelines, then, yeah, I think they have the right to not approve our testing program. Dr. Paceto, I don't know if you want to, I see you in the audience, I don't know if there's any additional clarifications you would offer, or if I'm saying something that's not accurate, please.
I think it's saying accurate. If I understand the question, it means you, you feel a need to, you feel that you're so, so, so.
I know that other districts are looking at the PA DOH program, not specifically for this, but just to increase the capacity of their ability to test. And I think you asked this question, and I want to make sure I hit on it. I think it's, the motivation behind this is not only the tests and the scarcity of the tests, but also scarcity of resources to administer the tests. They are guiding districts to focus on test-to-stay, which has been redesigned, and I'll talk about it later. They're talking about mask-to-stay, which is very similar to test-to-stay, again, I'll talk about it later, and testing of symptomatic individuals.
We'll let them go, because this is a new item. I need the one, whoever's in that first, I need a name and township.
Hello. My name, can you guys hear me?
We can hear you. Go ahead, state your name, township, and then you have two minutes.
Okay. It's really quick. My name is Angel Kobold. I live in Lower Pots Grove. And my student at, one of my children that attend the middle school, experienced being written up from the bus driver for asking for a mask. And in the write-up, it said that my child had asked for too many masks. And I, and it was followed through by the vice principal and the principal at the school, at the middle school. And it's very concerning to me. He actually was removed from class, from educational setting, to be addressed for this That's all.
Just so it's clear, the, this is, the bus masks are not within the discretion of the district. That's not a district rule, that's a federal rule, and if you ride the transit system, if you ride SEPTA, if you ride the trains, you have to wear a mask. If you go to the airport, you have to wear a mask.
I think her concern was that someone was written up for asking too many.
For asking for a mask.
Okay.
Well, I mean, I don't know, you know, I mean, go ahead, David.
I'm, thank you for your comment. I'm going to ask Dr. Ramich, who is working the computer, to make sure that he has your name correctly, and we'll follow up with you tomorrow. name correctly, and we'll follow up with you tomorrow.
Second person. Go ahead, state your name, township, and you have two minutes.
Is it Susan?
Susan, if you're trying to talk, you're still muted.
If we're going to go, we're going to move on if we have nothing. She can go again at the end of me, I'm not going to say anything. All right, we're going to move on. Does anybody else on the board have a comment in regards to this particular item that we're going to vote on? All right, so I'm going to have one last comment. I think there's been a lot of discussion in regards to, do we follow the recommendations? Are they recommendations? Are they mandates? What are they from the Montgomery County Health Department when it comes to items like this, testing and assurance testing? Whether or not we're wearing these masks, and we're going to discuss that more in the second part of the Health and Safety Plan. I think that, if I'm understanding correctly, Dr. Finnerty, their recommendation is a recommendation, but it's under their licensure, so if we do not follow, they have the ability to say, we're not giving you the test then, you're going to have to pay them out of pocket. You're not going to be allowed to do Mask to Stay. You're not going to be allowed to do any of the items that we're funding for, and you can either pay out of pocket, or you don't do it. Is that, am I reading that correctly?
More or less. I think that's a correct interpretation. I think what they're saying is that, is that the tests that we are going to source from Montgomery County Office of Public Health should not be used for this.
My personal opinion, being that, I don't know about everybody else, but you can't find tests anywhere. So I want to be able to have these tests available to the people that are here, and my recommendation is to follow the guidelines that we've been following for two years. So does anybody have any questions or issues with that?
I'd just like to add that the guidelines that we're following aren't set up by people who don't know what they're talking about. These are all highly educated doctors, public health professionals, you know, virologists, whatever. You know, they have lots of initials after their names, and I trust them to make the right decisions when it comes to public health. So regardless of whether they're providing us tests, I think we need to follow what they recommend and the guidelines that they set. They know way more about this than anybody I know, so.
So all those in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
No.
That's Bill, correct?
Yes.
Just as we know, it was, Bill's the no vote. Motion passes, move on to the next item.
Sorry, item 11.
Motion to combine items, action items 11.1 through 11.9.
I have a motion and a second to combine 11.1 through 11.9. Do I have any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes, educational items.
Item 12, action items, education.
And for those, I'd like to combine, motion to combine items 12.1 and 12.2.
I have a motion and a second to combine the two conference items. Do we have any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, move to the revised student calendar.
Item 12.3, revisions for the, for our current 2122 student calendar. This is the calendar that, if you picked up a copy, you have a hard copy with you. We are proposing the following changes in order to provide two in-person makeup days without having to add student days at the end of the year. In-person instruction is important to continue, to improve student achievement and address learning loss due to COVID pandemic. If we require additional weather makeup days, at that point, we would consider using up to five virtual learning days. I need a motion and a second, and then I'll have some further explanations, and we could, I could talk, answer your questions.
I have a motion and a second to approve the new student calendar for this year with the changes that were made. Do I have any questions or comments from the board? Any? No? Anybody here?
Well, I do, but can Dave finish what he was saying?
Yes, sir. So the changes are as follows. We would convert February 18th and April 14th, which are current staff-only days, to emergency makeup days. The January 17th snow day would be made up on February 18th, and I'm going to come back to February 18th. And if we have a snow day prior to April 14th, then April 14th would become a regular school day. The other changes is we have two scheduled Act 82-hour early release days. Thursday, February 17th, we would move to Friday, February 18th. This would be the Friday before President's Day. So just to be very clear, the January 7th snow day that we just had would be made up on February 18th, and it would be made up with a two-hour early release. Okay? And then the last change would be to move Wednesday, April 13th, to Friday, May 27th. They're both, they remain school days, but we're moving the Act 82-hour early release to the Friday before Memorial Day. So those are the changes that we are proposing and are written into this schedule.
Any additional comments?
So the first day that's getting changed, sorry. So the first day that's getting changed isn't till April?
The first day that would be, that would change would be the existing staff day on February 18th, would, that would, because of, we already used the snow day on January 7th, that would then, instead of being a staff day, that would be a regular school day.
Okay. All right. So I just, I hesitate to make any changes to a calendar that so many people were involved with and rely on. However, snow days is a reality. So the only changes, and I'm sorry for not following you, I'm trying to do too many things at once, but are you making any changes to the current calendar for reasons other than a makeup snow day?
No. These are to facilitate two snow days, emergency snow days, in person, without changing the end date of the school year.
Got it, thank you.
And then, just to clarify, when this was originally, the agenda was originally published, this Friday was going to be affected, but that is no longer happening.
Correct. There was an earlier draft that had this Friday as a two-hour Act 80 day, but that's not in this, the draft that I'm proposing today for your vote.
Any other questions?
Let me just remind the board that a calendar vote requires the majority of the board, so we will need, I guess we have eight here, so we're going to need five. You need five in any event. But since we started with seven, I was a little worried about some.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Move on to the Health and Safety Plan revisions.
Item 12.4, Health and Safety Plan Revision. Dr. Ramage and Ms. Brier, can you please pull up the PowerPoint? Okay. Next slide, please. So our plan goals haven't really changed. I changed the language here slightly, but our goals remain to keep students and staff safe and in person for 180 days of in-person learning, and to safely conduct all scheduled events, athletic competitions, activities, and performances, and to minimize the number of student days lost by minimizing close contacts. And this is the bullet that I changed slightly. This bullet, when I presented this in December, had specific test programs, Test to Stay and point-of-care testing. I've changed that bullet to read, implement antigen testing programs that mitigate COVID and enhance the safety and staff of students during in-person learning. And that is a deliberate change because Montgomery County Office of Public Health has kind of changed the structure and name of their program, and I wanted to be, I wanted to embrace those changes and what programs we think are valuable. If it can keep, help keep our schools open and gives parents options to keep kids in class and give staff options to be teaching kids where they want to be, then we support it. And that's what that bullet stands, kind of stands for. Next slide, please. Just as I did before, when I presented a similar presentation, I want this slide up there as well, because even when data's not good, and this data is not good, we're not afraid of presenting it. So we saw a very significant increase, I know this is small, the printing here, but we saw a very significant increase in the number of, well, in the level of community transmission when the data was released this afternoon. We went from 400 to...
So small, I couldn't read it.
To 944. So this comes right from Montgomery County House, Office of Public Health COVID dashboard, and other districts, we're kind of in the middle of the pack. There are districts that are above 1,000, but certainly the level of community transition has increased significantly. Next slide, please. So now, this slide talks specifically about the changes in Montgomery County Office of Public Health guidance. So this is, they published four documents, and I'll be sharing those links with you tomorrow. And the changes prioritize contact tracing. So they are recommending a more, a priority of resources to certain contact tracing, and that is the contact tracing for high-risk activities such as athletics, where students are in, within six feet for 15 consecutive minutes. Also, some of our music programs probably would qualify there, and then also the cafeteria. They're the, they're primary focus for contact tracing. The big change is they are not requiring quarantine for bus and classroom exposures. Bus and classroom exposures, in our classrooms, we have at least three feet, so we haven't had a lot of quarantining of students from classroom exposures to begin with, so that's not much of a change. The, there is a change with buses. They're saying that we don't have to contact trace for buses, students are masked, so that, that's a change. The other change that they're making is Test to Stay. This is a program that I talked about before, but it has changed entirely. This is now a program for staff only, and I have a slide on this that'll, well, no, I'll talk about it right now. This is for staff that are household contacts, so someone in their home is positive. And under current guidance, that, that staff member would have to stay home for 10-plus days, even though they may never convert to COVID-positive. Under this program, it is a very heavy regimen of testing. It's daily testing. They would have to test every morning before they could come within, will come into the school. But it does offer the ability to keep staff who are healthy but contacts with household COVID case working and doing it safely. So this is, a staff member does not have to elect to do this, I mean, does have to elect to do this, is not something we would force, but it gives staff members an option, if they're healthy, asymptomatic, to come in, test on a daily basis for 10 days, and not miss any school. It is specifically for staff that have received the primary vaccine but not the booster. It is, unvaccinated staff cannot participate in this, and fully vaccinated staff don't have to participate in it because they're already not a close contact. So this is, this is a new program with a very familiar name. Mask to Stay is essentially what Test to Stay used to be. This is a, this is a program that is for students and for staff members who are asymptomatic but have been exposed. The exposure can be in school or in the community, not in the household. If a student has a household contact, they still must quarantine. We do not have a program, a testing program, that allows them to test out of that scenario. Students must mask at all times when they're around others. That means extracurriculars. So if you won't wear a mask in extracurricular, you can't participate in this program. And it does require one test, which is a decrease. It's a test between day four and day six. So that's what these, what this program looks like, okay? So that is a pretty fair summary of the changes in guidance from Montgomery County Office of Public Health. That results in a couple of changes, next slide, please, to our Health and Safety Plan. In our Health and Safety Plan, I'm directing you to page five. All of these changes are highlighted in yellow, so they should be easy to find. In our contact tracing, we have changed the language to reflect that Pots Grove School District will follow guidance issued by Montgomery County Office of Public Health with regard to isolation, quarantine, and contact tracing. So we did leave this deliberately vague in case these, in case the guidance changes slightly, so we don't have to keep bringing this back for contact tracing. Okay? Next slide, please. The only other change is in our diagnostic and screening testing, again on page five. And there, I want to read, read this entire passage to you all. Pots Grove School District prioritizes the value of in-person learning and will participate in Montgomery County Office of Public Health-approved antigen testing programs that mitigate the spread of COVID and enhance the safety of students and staff during in-person learning. Antigen testing programs will include, but aren't limited to, Test to Stay and Mask to Stay. Pots Grove School District will evaluate and implement antigen testing programs as they become available through Montgomery County Office of Public Health. No antigen testing program will be implemented without parental consent. We will not test your child without a parental consent from you. So that language is in there to embrace the two programs that are out there, and if the name changes, as long as the spirit of the program is to keep staff and students safe and open in-person learning, we want the, we want to support that program. I'll take your questions.
I have a question regarding the Test to Stay for the staff that don't have booster shots. So what does that look like for them? They have a household contact, they aren't permitted to enter the building without the test, so would that be that they're taking the test themselves with one of the Binax or one of the other brands and then providing that when they come in? What does that look like?
So, so the question was, what does the Test to Stay look like for, for staff? So what that would look like is they, we still have to develop exactly the protocol, but what it would look like is staff would come to likely one office, probably our district office, should they elect to participate? Should they elect to participate? This is not something that we're compelling staff to do, but it is a way for staff to not have to take leave, as long as they're asymptomatic and healthy, to come in and participate voluntarily in the testing program, and they can, they could continue to teach or support our students because aides, all of our staff are eligible to do this. So they would come to a location that we would determine prior to the day starting, test, using tests supplied by Montgomery County Office of Public Health, and then as soon as we get a negative test, they would report to work.
Any other comments or questions? Anybody on Zoom? Dr. Ramage? Okay. So, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Nay.
Who, I didn't, I don't know who the nay is.
Joe Vecchio's a no.
So you know, we got Joe for the nay. Motion passes.
We are still, we...
Go ahead, Joe. No, go ahead, Joe.
We're still revisiting this on February 22nd, correct? All of this stuff?
The, the language on February 22nd, so if you're talking specifically about the masking language, the masking language is tied to level of community transmission. The, we can revisit that whenever the board would want to revisit that. But right now, the, the plan is tied to level of community transmission. So as soon as that drops below 50, then the masks would then be optional. We don't need board action to do that. But we can review this whenever it's the will of the board.
I thought I was reading that it's still something that we will revisit, the whole health and safety, safety plan on February 22nd in here.
Yes, sir. We did have that in there. That language was in there. That language is not in there now, but we, we can revisit whenever you want to revisit, whenever the board wants to revisit.
All right. So it's brought to my attention, we may not have gotten a motion. So I need a motion and then a second to approve this.
And let me clarify Mr. Vecchio's question. So he is correct that the language about specifically referring to February 22nd was in the original plan. It's not in it as, as it's written now, but again, as I said, we can review this at the will of the board. If you want to put, if you're more comfortable putting in...
Can we have that language put back in there?
If that's the will of the board, we can certainly put that in.
I would be willing to read, to discuss again in February.
Okay.
Okay. So I have, I'm gonna, Joe, make a motion to approve what we have with amendment that we will discuss everything on February...
22nd.
22nd. And Tina will second it, and then we'll go to vote for that. And if that does not pass, we'll vote on this one.
Make a motion that we accept what happened tonight, but with the understanding that we will review the entire health and safety plan once again on, I believe, our February 22nd meeting.
Yeah. And all, my question is procedurally, are we first voting on whether we're going to have that discussion? We're going to insert the February 22nd date, then you're going to go back to the underlying motion? First, you're going to vote on the amendment, as I understand it?
I thought we were going to, I thought we were going to vote on this with the amendment that he's putting in.
Well, that's, if whoever...
Can we do that, or is that not procedural? We have to do this first.
Well, we don't have to. Let me try to make this clear, so we don't have a messy set of minutes. Whoever made the original motion and second, do they agree to withdraw that?
We didn't, that's the problem.
They're saying we didn't make the motion.
All right. Well, then it's not an amendment. Just make the motion to approve the plan with the revisiting on February 22nd.
Okay. So we're going for, we're going to vote first, just so we got this all clear. We're going to vote on Joe's mess, amendment first, which will be to relook over the health plan on February 22nd. Then I'm going to ask for a new motion for what we were just discussing on this. So it's actually going to be two motions. So we're doing one for Joe to put in, into this health and safety plan that we're going to revisit it on February 22nd. We're going to vote on that. Then...
I don't think you need two, Al. I don't think you need two motions. No, he, he was thinking that we need...
There was no motion on the floor.
There was no motion in the beginning.
But the original motion isn't for this one.
No. My, my motion's the original motion now.
Let's, yeah. So let's first vote, first, let's back up. Does somebody make a motion for, as it sits on the agenda, without the date? Somebody ready to make that motion?
We haven't yet.
Okay. All right. You're making that motion?
We haven't yet.
I'm saying do it, do it. Do it. Okay. Then we have a second to that?
Second.
Okay. Now, we'll vote on the amendment. No, no, we'll vote on the amendment first.
And then we'll do Joe's.
Okay. So now...
All right. So Joe and Bill, what we're going to do is we're going to vote on this particular piece first that we just discussed.
Let's vote on the, see if they want to amend the motion.
But they already...
They want to amend the motion.
So we already got a...
We, we just messed it all up.
Yeah. You just voted this and then voted that, right?
I'm sorry.
Wow.
All right. So Joe, we want you to make a motion to amend the, this motion to add a date of February 22nd. Go ahead and do that.
So I would like to amend Jim's motion to approve this health and safety plan with the intention of reviewing it on February 22nd.
I second that motion.
All right. So I have a first and I have a second on Joe's amended motion to approve this piece right here with the date of February 22nd that we review the health and safety plan. Do I have any questions or comments on that? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Okay. Now you have an amended motion.
We have an amended motion.
We're back and vote on the underlying motion. Now it's amended.
We're to vote on that one again?
We haven't voted on it yet.
Which is good.
Oh, we voted on his amendment. All right. So now we approved your amendment. Boy, you gotta go through this legally. All right. Now we're going to vote on the combination. The combination is going to be of the, what we have just stated, including Joe's amended motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right. That all passes now. That's okay. JOC, please.
Item 13, a report of the Joint Operation Operating Committee. Ms. Grimm is not here today. I did, however, attend the Joint Operating Committee on, what was, I forget, pardon me, I forget the date. There were, there were, February 3rd.
January 3rd.
January 3rd. Sorry. I want to move to February already. There were a couple of items that we discussed. First, that was the reorganizational meeting, and Ms. Grimm, I'm proud to say, was nominated, or again, is returning as the president of the JOC. The other thing that we did in that meeting is just what we did here. The, the Joint Operating Committee approved the health and safety plan for the Western Center, and the approved plan was, reflects the existing health and safety plans from all three schools. So it does require masks at the Western Center. And then the last item is, there's plans to have a retreat scheduled for the Joint Operating Committee in February. And that is the report. Any questions?
Move on to committee items. With the assignments, did we do anything with that?
So item 14 is the 2022 committee assignments. It is an informational item. The, in, in public comments, the individual board members have been assigned to our five standing committees, well, four standing committees and one ad hoc committee. And it's purely an informational item.
And that'll be adjusted on the website?
That will be adjusted on the website and in the record.
All right. All right. We're going to move to new business. I'm going to go here first, and then we're going to go to the online. So Tina, any new business? Our student body, any new business? Coming back around, Dr. Nippert? Jim? Ashley? I don't have anything.
I do have one thing.
You have one thing. You go.
This past weekend was law enforcement appreciation day, and I wanted to share the goings on a Monday because it perfectly bookended exactly my personal appreciation for law enforcement and also, I think probably, some of the unsung work that they do. My day Monday started at 4:30, 4:15 in the morning, when our local police departments in our three townships reported in to me on how the roads were, because we had some concerns about the roads on Monday, and their, their teams were out and running the roads, and were kind enough to work together and give me a call at 4:30 in the morning. And I ended that day on Bucat Road with our emergency responders when we had a bus accident. And it was great to see our emergency responders there, how they took control of that situation and calmed everyone down, managed the traffic, and made sure our kids were safe. So I just wanted to thank our law enforcement and emergency responders. It was a perfect kind of bookended day where just drove home how important they are to us and the credit they deserve. So thank you.
Thank you. Now we're going to go online. I'm going to go Jay first. Hearing nothing. Joe?
I have nothing further for this evening right now.
All right. Bill, you're last.
All right. My last new business. So last Saturday, I put my house up for sale in my next step of transitioning to Virginia, where I've accepted a position that I could not turn down. My decision to move to Virginia has not been an easy one. This amazing school district being one of the things on my list of reasons not to make that plunge. However, it's, it's time to move on to my next journey, and thus, this will be my last school board meeting. So while the last few years as a school board director have led to less hair on my head and a bigger waistline from the delicious PTA snacks, I've been honored to serve with an incredibly dedicated and talented group of directors. We didn't always agree, and quite frankly, that is why I have the utmost respect for each of you. We have all been willing to share our honest opinions and to challenge each other for the good of the district. I remember years ago, listening to Andrea Forrest, senior, the mother of one of our amazing teachers and a past school superintendent, talk about moving from good to great. And I feel that is where Potters Grove is right now. Great. You have a great superintendent, administrators, teachers. Because of that, you are producing great learners and citizens that will bring the change to this world that we need. So thank you, Potters Grove, for many great memories and for always, always putting students first. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Bill. I do need a motion to accept...
Can you hear? Yeah. Bill, it's Mark. When is your resignation effective as of? Tonight?
Yes. I have a letter I meant to scan into Al and you and Dave at the beginning of the meeting, effective at the conclusion of tonight's meeting.
I just wanted the minutes reflected, so effective as of the end of tonight's meeting.
All right. So, and I also need a motion to accept Bill's resignation. I have a motion and a second to accept Bill's resignation. Does anybody have any comments? Well, I do. I have been working with Bill for the entire time I've been on the board. He came on the same timeframe as me, and Bill's been a wonderful person for the district. I know some will disagree with some of his comments and his votes and such, but Bill's been absolutely consistent and has always thought of the student first, teachers first, community first. He has always voted that way from start to finish. He's never wavered on anything he's said. Any other comments about anything when it comes to COVID and such? That's individual, but Bill has been incredibly a good value to the school district, and he will be missed, in my opinion. All right? So thank you very much, Bill, for the full six years you've been here.
I also want to thank Bill. It's, you know, anytime anyone performs any level of service, it's, it's something to be valued and appreciated, and I've appreciated your time here with us, Bill. Thank you.
Mr. Parker, this is Dr. Finerty. I haven't known you well, or long, rather, but, but again, I, I echo the comments of your colleagues. I very much appreciated our conversations and your work and your dedication to this board and to this community, and I wish you well moving forward.
I'd also like to say that I've definitely never, I've definitely had many times that I've disagreed with you, Bill, but you've always, I've always respected your, your negative votes against my yays because you've always voted such because of your principles, and you've always stuck to your principles. So enough for, you've never voted for whimsical reasons. It's always been because you've held an ideal and a principle, and you've stuck to them. So I do respect that.
Yeah, Bill. This is, this is Chuck Nippert. I really appreciate working with you, and we've had a very good relationship, and I think we didn't always agree, but I think it's been a collegial relationship that's been beneficial for the district and the students and the community.
Best of luck, Bill, in your new job. I hope it all works out for you. I don't really have a whole lot else to say other than good luck and thanks for all the time you gave to the school board. I know you did put in a lot of time and effort, and it was all appreciated.
One last comment, Bill. I look forward to seeing you finally in person next graduation here, and I know it's going to be a big one for you, so I look forward to seeing that.
Absolutely. I'll be there. Thank you, everyone.
All right. Now, because we have a resignation, we have a policy in fact here. So what we're going to do is we're going to put it out to the public for someone to replace Bill. Now, what you're going to need to do is you're going to need to send a resume and your intent to become part of the school board. You will have two weeks, so we will put this out tomorrow, Dr. Finerty?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You will have two weeks. Now, that comes us to the next board meeting. Now, my opinion is, this is a little bit obviously larger than when Joe came on board. We have a sitting person that's going to sit for two full years. So I don't want us to just immediately put somebody in. So what I'm asking the board is that we will accept the recommendations, we'll accept the resumes and everything up to the next board meeting. Depending on how many people apply, we'll interview them that, that night. We won't make a vote that night. We'll let, allow everybody to decide what they want to do and such, because everything has to be in public. I've asked this, and unfortunately, we cannot do anything outside of the public when it comes to asking the questions and interviewing, and I know some people have been a part of that on this board and in public, and yeah, it's not the greatest meeting to try to discuss anything. But that'll also give us... But that'll also give us additional meeting, because I don't like to have votes right away, we'll have additional meeting on February 8th for who we actually want to replace. That is gonna give us a full two weeks after we hear them to make the decision on who we want as a school board representative. Also, it'll give the community a chance to discuss it, we can't discuss it amongst ourselves, but the community is going to get a chance to hear that, and they will then get their chance to say their comments, which they have not done prior. You know, because we've always had it where we vote it right then and there that night. So this will also, because like I said, this is a two-year full-term person, and the community should have some say, although that were the vote, but they may be able to have a public comment as in who they feel, and that is something I believe they should be allowed to do, full transparency-wise. So the vote will be on February 8th. We'll discuss everybody on January 25th. On January 25th, they'll have up to January 25th to apply. Anybody have any questions on that?
I do have a question, just although I imagine you probably already asked Mark this, but it's, so it's 30 days for us to have a new replacement, not 30 days for people to put in their bid for a replacement. Okay, that's why I just wanted to-
It'll be taken out of your hands. The other thing I would only comment, it's not legal, is that keep your eyes peeled, as you will, to the website and the newspaper, because I suspect if you have a significant number of applicants, you might start earlier that night. So, you know, those interviews could be at 6:00 or 6:30.
Yeah, it depends on, obviously, how many we have. We have two. If we have two, it's easy. If we have nine to 10, then obviously we'll have to start earlier, or we'll have to change the agenda to accommodate.
Just a question, will we be allowed to question the applicants, or are we going, what's the format gonna be? The applicant comes in, makes a statement, and after that, are we going to be able to question, which I know has happened in the past?
We've always done it where the applicant gets to make a statement. We have a set number of questions that we give to each individual, and then we've allowed, depending on time, obviously, follow-up questions.
Okay. Thank you.
Many boards, you don't have to do it any particular way. Many boards have set questions, because they want the playing field to be fair, so that everybody's asked the same question.
Anybody else have any questions? All right. So that's how we're gonna do it for the public.
Don't forget to vote.
We have to vote. All right. So we have, we already made the motion to accept this. I need a vote yea to accept the resignation. All those in favor? Anybody opposed? Congratulations, Bill, on your new job.
Thank you. Hey, I guess, Mark, I had to abstain from that one, huh?
Again, sorry, you don't get to vote. All right. Now we're gonna open up to the second public comment. If there's any public comment on something that was not related to tonight, was not a part of the health plan, or part of the mask to stay and all of that, if anybody has any other issues or would like to comment, I'll ask online first. No hands. Okay. I'll ask here first.
Can I refute something one of you guys said that comes from public comment? Did you guys go after we did?
Refute. You want to refute something?
Something one of you guys said.
I'm, you know what? I'll let that, yeah, let's refuse. Go ahead.
It's supposed to be on the agenda. Dustin Dattel. Lower, lower Pots Grove, yeah. I just want to comment, Ms. Custer earlier said that the Montgomery County Public Office of Health is, is full of intelligent people with initials after their names, so you're gonna follow them? How insanely naive and stupid that comment is, because nobody in history who's smart with letters after their name has done anything bad, right?
We're talking about something different, Andy. Come on up. Name it, obviously.
Andrew Corman, Upper Pots Grove Township.
Go ahead.
A word of advice to everyone in the room, everyone listening. Speak your future into existence. At the last meeting, I called for Mr. Parker's resignation, and it just happened. Last thing I'll say is that the American Rescue Plan, E S S R E, I'm sorry, E S S E R, awards are blood money, in my humble opinion. The award period and the grant period is through September 30th, 2024. Do you intend to wear masks up until that date? Unmask our children.
Mr. Corman, let's be clear, I did not resign due to you or anybody like you. That's for damn sure.
Good luck, Bill.
We have one hand raised, correct? Two. Okay. Go ahead. State your name, township. You have two minutes. Is there another person we can go to? So we got, just making sure, we're good? All right. Sorry. We're gonna make a motion for adjournment. I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Enjoy.